Okay, we've got a green light. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Six Days Before Christmas Day meeting, December 19, 2017, Edina City Council. Roll call, please. Ms. Mencken?
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to add anything to the agenda or modify the agenda in any way? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you need a handheld microphone for the...
I guess so, yes. Thank you.
Do you have a... [inaudible]
Good evening. My name is Ken Potts. I live at 4236 Crocker Avenue in Edina. And I just have three graphic images for you tonight with some comments about residential redevelopment and the discretionary pyramid, especially in regards to imported fill on residential properties. For all the concern raised publicly regarding how the city reviews projects prior to issuing a building permit, there's at least as much concern about what happens after construction starts.
I'm still not seeing your slides.
Yeah, hold on, Mr. Potts.
Oh, I've got it on the table.
We're gonna let you start over here as soon as we get your visuals up there. Okay.
I think I can just continue with this if it's up. Thank you, though. According to Rogers Pyramid, there should be little or no discretion at the top of the pyramid, the building permit and site plan process areas. Yet this is not the case in practice here in the city. I've got a couple examples for you. Staff apparently has the discretion to waive permit fees and allow fill additions onto city property. This was the case on Gloucester Drive, the project that trucked in a large quantity of fill and really made a mockery of the whole approval process. A berm was constructed across both private and city land. The permit was submitted and approved only after the project was complete, and the permit fee has not been paid, at least according to the e-permit site that I checked today, one year after the project was complete. Staff apparently also has the discretion to allow neighborhood character changes. Neighborhood character. This is because the city of Edina does not regulate imported fill, not at all. The city code does not track quantities of fill that are trucked in, more than 500 cubic yards in the case of some of our residential city lots. So staff has the discretion to allow steep slopes created by the fill. And to add insult to injury, site plan changes are allowed during construction, which make the conditions worse. So for instance, here's an example of a future vision for a neighborhood whose current character is modest ramblers set on low-lying and relatively flat land. Where there are currently no retaining walls, what is proposed is a series of built-up terraces. So this is clearly neighborhood character change, which is supposed to be governed by you, the city council. So to finish up, when a project is permitted to make radical site changes using fill in an attempt to meet some other aspect of the code or to obtain a variance, this is the basis of alarm for the adjacent neighbors. This is why you have been hearing from so many people at recent meetings. In fact, enough project examples have come forward that have been allowed over the last 10 years to cause problems, but you've heard about these at recent meetings that have carried this late into the night. You can do better than this. Edina's better than this. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them this evening that's not otherwise on the agenda? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? All right. And on to the next portion of the agenda, which Caitlin Idness has for us, and that is the November Speak Up, and it has to do with Grand View Green.
Hi, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm just gonna pull up my presentation here.
Good evening, Ms. Idness.
So, yes, I'm here to present on the November discussion of Speak Up Edina, which featured the Grand View Green Highway 100 lid. We've been holding organized Speak Up conversations monthly for the last several years, and each month we feature a different topic. And last month in November, we posed the following questions about Grand View Green. How important is it to have safe and friendly connections between the east and west portions of Highway 100? How do you see two acres of new green space best being used? What type of amenities do you envision for this new park? What types of events and programming would attract you to use the new park? And then while the focus of this particular conversation is about the public open space that could be created, the overall project could stimulate new development adjacent to the highway? What suggestions do you have for the type and scale of new development in the area? So you can see that the conversation was really mainly focused on just the green space that would be directly over Highway 100. Conversation was open from October 30th to November 30th. We had 78 comments, 803 users of the site, 70% of the sessions on Speak Up Edina were from new visitors, and there were roughly 4,100 page views. So it was an active discussion. It was an interesting discussion, though, because very few people actually answered the questions. So the people that did, some said, "Add a lot of flowers, shrubs, and trees to make it feel like a park. New development should be consistent in scale to what's already there on either side of the highway. Include a historic park, so move Grange Hall and Cahill School, surround them by maybe historic gardens and possibly a new building, so really create a historic piece of property there." And then pedestrian connections between the east and west side of Highway 100 are important, but a lot of people suggested just having a bridge or improving the routes that are already there, that lid is not necessary. So even though it wasn't a question, a lot of the comments were comments that were not in favor of the project, but they really didn't answer a lot of the questions that we had. So like I said, it was an interesting discussion. I think the meetings that we've held on Grand View Green have been really beneficial to the community, because I've heard a couple comments, people saying that they learned a lot more about the project and that they don't necessarily believe what they commented on the conversation. So that was interesting, just a couple people that I heard that from. But yeah, so in summary, it was kind of an interesting conversation, and yeah. Do you guys have any questions about that?
I do.
Questions for Ms. Idness? Member Staunton?
If you could go back a couple of slides to your... Right there. So you say 78 comments made in total and 803 users. So do we know how many commenters made the 78 comments? I'm assuming some made more than one?
Yes, they did. Because some people answered the same question even a couple times in a couple different comments, but I'd have to go through and then pull how many different people.
Actually, the mayor's just showed me some of your statistics from the packet that those 78 comments were just 29 users.
Oh, well, there you go.
So is that, volume-wise, how does that compare to how... Or maybe the way to ask it is, are we tracking at all how much volume we get on the Speak Up Edina over the months?
I don't record. The only record I have is from the presentation each month, and I just usually compare it to what it was this month before, because that's fresh in my mind. This was a pretty active conversation, not as active as building heights last month, but much more active than a lot of conversations in the past, actually.
It might be interesting at some point just to do some, you know, as we come up on the end of the year, we start thinking about, you know, aggregate history and just seeing bar graph or some kind of representation on an annual basis of what kind of participation we're getting in this community engagement vehicle as we try to think in the future about the best way to use it.
Yeah, for sure. And I know next year, we're gonna look into, is this the best platform to use, or are there others that may be helpful to create a larger engagement from the public?
Right. Part of the search for the Holy Grail of the perfect community engagement.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Other questions or comments from Ms. Idness?
Just one comment. You go from asking people about general feelings about building height to litting over a freeway. I challenge you to come up with a more... Where you're gonna get more interesting opinions in this next one, so.
I'm open to any ideas you have on potential conversations.
All right, good. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, we've got one public hearing matter this evening, and that is the next portion of the agenda. And our finance director, Don Urum, has this matter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So before you tonight, we have a resolution authorizing the issuance and reissuance of the 2012 bonds and the 2009 bonds for issuances that were made for improvements to Braemar Ice Arena. As part of the refunding of the 2009 bonds, which we did a couple of weeks ago, bond council asked to review kind of the use of the facility. So a couple of things. The initial bonds were issued as governmental bonds, and so her question really related to the use and whether or not these would be classified as private activity bonds. And there's two tests that kind of determine whether or not they're private activity. And the one I'll talk about is kind of the use of the facility. So our facility at Braemar Ice Arena is used primarily by the Edina Hockey Association, as well as a figure skating club. So our bond council, on advice of bond council, she's recommending that these bonds be issued as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. So really, from a kind of a bondholder perspective, has no impact to the bondholders, really can be classified as kind of a housekeeping item. And with that, there's a memo from bond council in the packet, as well as my staff report. Nick Anhut from Ellers is here tonight as well, so we can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Urum. Questions for Director Urum? All right, good. I think we understand it well.
I do have one.
Member Brindle?
As much as I'm completely congested tonight, so let's say we were going out and looking for bond... For financing, and it was for improvements to the arena to provide space for 501(c)(3) organizations like the Hockey Association or figure skaters to use the ice. Would we find that the buyers for the bonds would be more or less interested because they are 501(c)(3) users in contrast to a government user?
Councilmember Brindle, I... Because there really is, from a tax perspective, there really is no difference between the governmental bonds and these qualified private activity bonds, so I don't see that there would be a difference in the bond buyer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up for questions or comments from folks in the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and inquire or testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Do we have a motion regarding Resolution 2017-144, which would authorize the reissuance described? Move the matter. All right, we got a motion and a second on Resolution 2017-144. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? Thank you, Director Urum. Nick, thanks for coming over.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter in front of us this evening is something we had in front of us a month or so ago, and that is the request for a first-floor elevation variance embodied in Resolution 2017-147. The address is 5712 Woodland Lane, and Director Teague has this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned, this was tabled from your November 8th meeting. You had asked the applicant to go back and revise the plans to try to minimize impacts to the neighborhood, redesign the house plan. Reminder, this is a variance from our requirement that says when a home is torn down and replaced, you can't exceed the first-floor elevation by more than a foot. And due to floodplain issues in this area, they're having to raise that up more than a foot. So the applicant has revised their plans and will present them to you this evening. I just want to remind the council that both the staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the variance. The planning commission vote was four to two. The findings that we had, the variances caused by that floodplain regulation that's forcing that first-floor elevation to be raised above one foot. So the practical difficulty here mainly is the existing floodplain elevation. The height of the home is about five feet less than the total height that could be allowed on this site. It's a relatively large lot, so they could have a house 40 feet tall. The proposal here is 35 feet. So staff and the planning commission felt that it is in character with the neighborhood, given that it does meet our height regulations. So with that, I will introduce Andy Porter, the applicant, and he is going to present the revised plans this evening.
Thank you, Director Teague. Mr. Porter, welcome.
My name's Andy Porter. I'm here tonight with Refined Custom Homes, and we're here representing the homeowner who's also with us here tonight. I'll make it brief. I know there's other things that you need to get to tonight, but wanted to go through this real quickly again and talk about what we've been doing since we were here last. The direction we got from the last meeting was to try harder as far as the massing and the scale of the new proposed home and try to bring it down, was the direction we got. Through additional design meetings, we believe we have accomplished a reasonable balance between our client's new home requirements and the neighbor's height and massing concerns. Carrie touched on this a second ago, but before we got to review... Before we get to review the design tonight, I want to reiterate the challenges that were in front of us on this project. Challenge number one was the existing home on the property was built well into the now designated FEMA floodway. Challenge number two, because of the FEMA-established floodway elevation and the city requirement to be two feet above the FEMA level, we are forced to raise the lowest level of the new home out of the current grade. And then challenge number three, due to the city sewer main running directly through the middle of the property, we are only allowed to use a small portion of the large lot that we have here. Some suggestion... Some have suggested we consider asking for a variance to remove the city's basement requirement. We assume this suggestion would also limit us from building a three-story home. If so, that means we would have a slab-on-grade main floor and one floor above that, which means two floors total, not three, which is traditional. Because of the tight footprint site conditions, this would only allow us to achieve a home with a finished square footage of about 3,400 square feet. Even if this was something that our client would accept, which they won't, there is no way we would be able to get financing for a home of this value with such a small living space. Said another way, this won't appraise. Much like an appraiser or future buyer would be, we pulled data from new construction homes between $1.6 million and $2 million in Edina over the past five years. Guess how many of those were under 3,500 square feet? Zero. In fact, over the past five years, the average new home built in Edina between $1.6 million and $2 million had almost 5,100 square feet, 1,700 square feet more than we could accomplish. The comparables that a appraiser would use to consider to justify this loan, or what a Realtor buyer would consider, all of those homes are about 50% larger than for the same price than what we could accomplish here, 50% more. To reiterate, considering the exercise, our home would be about 1,700 square feet too small, which is about the size of an additional floor. So again, going to that basement-only or slab-on-grade, it eliminates a whole floor for us, and then that will limit us or basically make it impractical for us to do this project. In addition to the no basement idea, there has been other suggestions. There was an idea presented by a neighbor that we detach the garage. Detaching the garage, in addition to it not being the preference of our client, would put the garage well into the floodway and create concerns about down-and-upstream damage in a flood event. Another idea was for a front-loading tuck-under garage. Again, in addition to it not being the preference of our client, this would visually create a three-plus-story wall to the street view and put the look of the face of the garage doors in straight-on view to the cul-de-sac, so you'd have a big wall facing the cul-de-sac. We prefer to have the garage doors around the side of the home, as designed, out of view of the street, which allows the soft transition of landscape to dominate the front yard versus the abrupt three-story home anchored by a front-loading garage. After considering these other ideas, we went back to the design and challenged our team to try harder and look for a compromise. What we came up with is about a four-and-a-half-foot overall reduction of the home. Four-and-a-half feet is quite a bit. It takes the overall height of the home measured from the front stoop from 28.3 feet to 23.9 feet. This is a 16% reduction from the home that we presented last time, which was approved by the planning commission.
Say that again, please, Andy.
It's a 16% reduction.
Okay, go back to the numbers for me.
Oh, the previous home that was approved was 28.3 feet tall from the front stoop. Now we're at 23.9 feet.
Okay.
So four-and-a-half-foot drop in ridge. We accomplished this in a couple of ways. First, we shallowed the pitch of the peaks. We brought those down to shallow it, which brought the ridge down, and then we actually pushed the whole house down into the second floor. Although our client is not thrilled to have reduced the living space of the second floor, they've agreed to this in the spirit of compromise. So here's some visuals to help understand what I'm talking about. This was what was approved at the planning commission and what we looked at last time. The overall ridge height here is at 901. Here, we dropped it three-and-a-half feet. And you can see, it wasn't just the two front peaks, but it was the entire ridge at the back, so the entire home came down three-and-a-half feet. And then we said, how far can we really push this down and not dramatically alter the second floor? So we pushed it down another foot. So you can see, this is where we started, came to here, and then down to here. This is a perspective, a more realistic perspective. The first one that I showed you, if you were to really set a drone or set a tripod up, you're hovered in the air. It's not a real-life perspective of the home. This is when you're kind of boots on the ground, standing in the cul-de-sac, looking up at it. And I wanted to show you this because, again, here's the original home. Now, as we drop down to kind of the middle solution, you can see that whole back ridge is gone. So now all you really see are the peaks and a gutter line right here. So the massing isn't really the same visual as that. And then we, again, we took it one step further and went one more foot. Here it is kind of in still format. The red is the original, the green is the kind of the middle point, and then the white is where we pushed it all the way down. So the white is what we're looking for as a redesign approval tonight. And then here it is in the other format. So as I close, please consider the overwhelming benefits to the neighbors, the city, and the other residents along the Minnehaha Creek that this approval will bring. First, the neighborhood gets a fantastic new family of five in lieu of a vacant deteriorating home. And second, the city and residents of the creek accomplish the goal of removing a dangerous hazard from the floodway. Approving this proposal would be an enormous win for all. Thank you. I'll take questions if you have to.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Questions for Mr. Porter at this point in time? Member Staunton?
Just looking at this graphic, so I'm not sure I can make out the number on... Are you saying on the house next door, the finished first floor is 867?
So what we have is the... The last time we had the survey data pointed out on here, we added that since then, and what we did is we went and did a visual of the home, and there were three risers into that home. So the 865.7 you see there?
Yeah.
That's grade. That's done by the surveyor. Then we calculated what three risers would be, and that gets... Used 867.
And then the 872.7 is that the finished first floor on your...
Correct.
...proposed structure?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I'm just looking for it, but maybe you can just... Quicker, for you to remind me, the level we have to stay at to be above the flood requirement...
862.2 is the starting point.
862.2.
Yeah.
All right.
860 is the... 860.2 is the floodway? City ordinance says we have to be at eight six... Two feet above that, 862.2. So that's where our garage slab is.
All right, so the neighbor next door is well above that with their main floor, based on that number?
Yeah.
Okay. I would just...
Go ahead.
Like one more clarification on... When you were making the comparisons and the studying, you know, the value, the value, you say a $1.5 to $2 million house and how that compares in the marketplace. The part I wasn't understanding when I was reading through that is that sort of a preset value you're targeting for this house, so then you go and look at the comparisons or which, I mean, stance or reason? I mean, do you start with, here's how many square feet the family needs, or, I mean, how do you... I wasn't understanding where you were arriving at that.
Sure. So where we arrived at that, and realistically, the number could be higher than that, but I used a conservative number. Based on the lot value, plus square footage calculations in today's world of what the cost of this home would be, added together, gets you to that $1.6 to $2 million range.
And that might be explaining it, is that you start... The basis is the value of the lot.
Yep.
And then the value of the house you would need to put on the lot...
Right.
...based on that.
Correct.
Is that normally sort of a tear... Because it's a teardown, is there sort of a formula around that?
Which part? The home or the lot? Formula? The formula is around the home side. The value of the lot's the value of the lot.
Okay.
Based on appraisals, or based on sales, or based on assessments, or whatever it might be.
So those appraisals or assessments, however the value of that lot is determined, it must... Was there any... I mean, it's obviously a beautiful site on the creek, but it also has some inherent problems. That... Was that not factored into the value of the lot?
When I did our calculation, we assumed the sale price of the lot. To be honest, I don't know if our client used financing or not. I don't... I didn't ask the question. So based on, even if we took... Even if we took that value down, a conservative number, based on the challenges of the lot, we're still gonna be up in that $1.6 to $2 million range. So I guess we could... So I guess, I guess we could, we could debate what the value of the lot is.
Right.
But, but you're going to get into that range.
It's probably not that material. I was just curious as I was reading, trying to understand.
Yeah, I used the sale price to
Okay.
Answer your question.
Thank you.
Member Stewart?
Thank you. You lowered the ceiling height on the second floor by about a foot, is that right?
Well, what we did is, where the gables are on this house, where the peaks are, when you push that down
I'm talking about the second step you did, which was to actually lower the ceilings on the inside of the house, because you pushed it down a little bit more, right?
So on the second floor, what we had before today was an eight-foot ceiling throughout the second floor. Now what we have is an eight-foot ceiling throughout a lot of the second floor, but we have angled ceilings coming into rooms. So your cubic feet in the rooms are smaller, your livable space, depending on ceiling height is. The shortest wall inside of those rooms is five feet tall.
What's the ceiling height on the first floor and the ceiling height on the basement level?
The first, the basement level's eight foot four, I believe, and the main floor's nine foot one. It's very difficult.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Porter? I'm looking at one of the original schematics from the staff's report. They went to the planning commission and the council before our last meeting. And looking at bifurcated slide that has the existing current condition with respect to the split-level house that you've proposed to tear down for your customers. And I can't tell what that existing condition is in terms of the lowest floor required, you know, in terms of the 862.2. It looks like it's a little bit lower than the house to the right, where even the garage is 862.9. Mr. Porter, sorry, I didn't see you. Go sit down.
Sorry.
So, did you, did you hear me?
No. Can you do it again, please?
All right, so I'm wondering, under the existing condition that's out there today, was out there when you made the original presentation, what was the low-floor height of the house you proposed to tear down? Because it looks, I can't see it clearly. It might have been 862.1, 860.1. It looks like it's slightly lower than the Rambler to the, to the right, where even the garage there, it looks like it's above the low-floor requirement of 862.2 at 862.9. What was the, what's the existing condition out there in terms of the low-floor height?
The lowest floor in this existing home, which is shown here, is right there at 858.3.
858.3?
That's the basement floor right now.
Okay.
So that's about four feet below where we have to be right now.
And I'm looking between the two houses, the two existing houses, and there's not much grade change. In fact, there's a little bit of a grade change. Your lower, the house next door, when I say your, I mean, the existing house you proposed to tear down's a little lower than the house to the right.
Yeah, we're sloping, sloping south, yeah.
Yeah, what you're proposing now is that you'd be at 872.7, going from 858.3 to 872.7 at the low-floor height. Is that a fair statement?
The low floor is going from 858.3 to 862.2 back here. Is that what you're asking?
Okay.
So the main, the front door, the front door is going to 872, but the walkout is going to be at 862.2.
Okay. But the new front door, if we compared front doors to the neighbor, you're now at 872.7 and the neighbor's at 867.
Correct.
Even, it looks like.
Yep.
So now you're
Five and a half feet.
You're five, almost six feet above the neighbor's front door, where before you were a few feet below the neighbor. Here's what I'm worried about.
Well, the, just, just to be clear in what you just said, the, keep in mind that lowest floor, this is a split-level home, a multi-level home, so the front door isn't at 858. It's actually higher than that. The first floor is 865.6, and the, and the front door threshold is in between those two, because it's a, it's a multi-level home. Which is one of the problems, I think, with the ordinance.
Is this on the house you're proposing to tear down, or in the neighboring house?
This is the, the tear down.
Existing house?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Well, here's what I'm worried about is, we've seen at least one other situation up in Morningside where it looks very similar to this situation, where, in fact, this is more exacerbated, in my opinion, where you've got houses at approximately the same grade, and now you've changed the grade to get it in compliance with the FEMA requirements. And we've got now, if we approve this, a pretty significant grade change with, a grade change to the degree where it requires a retaining wall. I don't know about gutters and anything like that, that would be on the south side of this house, but it just seems to me that we've set this up for a drainage problem, like we see right now up in Morningside, on one of the streets up there, where we see that same situation, where before the grades were fairly close, the elevations were fairly close, and now with the advent of a retaining wall and a sheer wall three stories high with no gutters, you've created, in addition to an aesthetic issue, you've also created a situation where you've got a drainage problem. In fact, if, if memory serves me right, this problem up in, this challenge up in Morningside is actually a house that you built up there.
I, I think, if we're referring to the same house, I, I think the conditions are completely different here. Where, our, the home that we're going to be building is downhill from the property that I think you're concerned about. The, the other one that I think you're referring to in Morningside, that home was uphill from, from, you know what I mean? I think it's, I think it's flipped in this case.
Yeah, that's true, but you're, you're raising this up to not only make it level with this, with the existing house to the south, you're getting it up even higher in the air. So my question, I guess, is, the existing home has the potential for improvement by being torn down and rebuilt in the flood zone as provided by the ordinance. Can we do that without a variance? Can we, can we make the improvements you need to make so that we can have this family of five move in there, that the whole neighborhood wants in there, without having to, without having to have such a significant variance or any variance at all? Does that make sense, that question?
I, I think the answer is, I think the answer is yes, but I don't think that it addresses your water concern. I think
Okay, let's forget about the drainage concern. Let's just talk about the ability to build a home that isn't now, you know, front-door separation, six feet above the neighbor, and still be able to comply with the new flood, the new FEMA Atlas 14 flood map, without having to get it that high in the air, either through the issuance of a variance that isn't so significant, or no variance at all?
I think the short answer is yes, but let me help you, because this is hard to understand, so I want to make sure I can. The height of the home and the look of the home won't be any different, because you'll come in, so we could, we could put the front door a foot above where the current front door is and create a, another split level and stay within compliance. But the main floor is going to be the exact same place it is in this design. Therefore, the second floor is going to be exactly where it is in this design. There's going to be, the only difference that you're going to see in that solution is you're going to see more house, more siding, and less landscaping. It's not going to affect water at all. The water's going to fall in the same footprint, it won't matter. But the visual that you have from the street, and this is what we tried to avoid, we don't want a big sheer wall of house. We want to tier up to that doorway to get that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, but it's, it's, I still think we got the problem. I mean, we still have the problem of, even though this house is a beautiful home, it still, we still face this challenge of it not fitting the character of the neighborhood. And so when, when you said in your presentation that you, you went away thinking we said try harder, that wasn't what I thought we said to you at all. And you said to try to get the overall height down, that, to me, that wasn't what we told you at all. What we, what I thought we told you was that we didn't like the notion that the front door of this house was six feet higher than the neighboring house, and the house itself now is out of character with the neighborhood in the quest to make sure that it stays out of the floodplain. And to my point, my point is, and it's, it's difficult to articulate, why can't we get this house down into a more appropriate sort of character, or lower, lower the house so that it fits the character of the neighborhood? I mean, it's clearly, to me, doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. And that's, and we got, to me, we got the same problem we had last time. We asked you to go back and solve this problem, and we actually had the same situation, I think, over on Sunny Slope with elevation a few years ago. We sent them back to the neighborhood to try to figure out how to address some, I'll call it elevation concerns, no reference to the company. And they came back with a solution that they fashioned with the neighborhood. But you're coming back with a proposed solution that lowers the roof by three feet, doesn't really change the effect of the look of the house relative to the rest of the neighborhood. It's still sitting up on a high mound, to me. And now you've got these retaining walls around it that, to me, from a secondary standpoint, creates a situation where we could have some significant runoff situations into the neighboring properties. Because now you've gone from being lower than the neighbor to much higher than the neighbor, and they didn't have any runoff problems before, and now they've got the potential for having runoff problems similar to what we saw up in, what we've seen recently up in Morningside. So I'm sorry I'm so difficult to understand, but this is
I understand
You haven't allayed my concerns about this by coming back a month later with a roof that's more shallow, less, less peaked. To me, the height means nothing. It's the overall appearance of the house relative to the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. Now, I know those could change over time, too, but you're sticking up like kind of a sore thumb in the neighborhood here, based on your drawings. And, and I want to try to help you. I want these people to have a chance to move in the neighborhood. And like I said before, everybody in the neighborhood that came here to see us when we had a public hearing wants them in the neighborhood. But they don't want a house like this in the neighborhood. So what are we going to do about it? Can't we find a solution here that allows you to put a house up in the flood zone that doesn't require a variance or such a significant variance? That's my question. And maybe that's a little more articulate, as we've gone along here, I can express it in a more articulate way.
I think that when you set the, when you set, assuming we're allowed to have three floors, when you set the lowest floor at 862.2, you're very limited on what you can do to try to make this look, as you put it, in the character of the neighborhood. There's just simple math that is very difficult to accomplish that with. And I don't know, and, and trust me, we spent time on this, trying to find that math to work, but if you have a, if you have an eight-foot-four lower level, which you have to have with a garage.
Mm-hmm.
If you have a nine-foot-one level, which is the expectation of any new home of this value, and if you have a minimum eight-foot second floor, there just isn't a lot you can do when you have the storm sewer line going through, when you have the sewer line going through here. I mean, we're doing this, it's just a very difficult thing to accomplish, and I understand your concern, I really do, but I, we've studied it so much, I don't know how to give you what you need, because I don't know if it's possible. If we could spread this out, if Chad wants to move the sewer line, we can go to a much wider, shorter house, but we can't. It's not practical.
Yeah, I forgot about the sewer line problem. Thanks for the reminder. Anyone else questions for Mr. Porter at this point in time? Did you, did you bring your owners with you, your potential owners?
Mister. Mister's here.
Okay. All right. Okay, member Brindle?
Have you looked at another design that could work on, I don't know, I don't recall how much property there is on the other side of the sewer line, or whether this, there's a home on, and I'm not going to come up with the street, but I think it's coincidentally woodland, right off of Wooddale, that has a couple of pieces to it. And it's connected.
So the other side of the sewer line is 100% the floodway?
And you can't build there?
No.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to get rid of.
All right.
Is the house in the floodway.
All right. Well, I appreciate your efforts. I like the, as a design, the original design is best, because with the scale of the house, the peaks, as they were originally, fit the design. Now, does the design fit the neighborhood? Does the design fit the lot? I still question that. But that's a subjective question. And, you know, I, I don't have a right, really, to be there. I don't have a right to tell you that you can't put this there. to legislate whether this fits the character of the neighborhood puts us in a, in a very squishy place legally. Can you build this house today? You can. Are you, are you due a variance in order to do this? You are, because of the floodplain. I've been thinking a lot about this. I got to the point this afternoon, I thought I better work on the rest of the agenda, or I'm not going to be prepared for tonight. And, and it's I know there are homes in, well, let me, this is something that I actually had a conversation about today. I think twice, maybe more than that, in my time as a council member, we have gotten updated FEMA floodplain maps each time more of Edina is in floodplain. So if Edina were developed today, I don't think you'd see basements as a rule in Edina. I think you'd see people in Edina, and I think you'd see homes here, but I think you'd see more slabs than you would see basements. So one of the challenges here with trying to have that lowest level is that then, in order not to have a house that towers even more, now it's banking up. And I think this is what the concern is from so many of us, when thinking about not only the character of the neighborhood with regard to the home itself, but it's where it sits height-wise. Because now we've built it up and we've brought in fill, because we want to make the house look like it fits in the property. So therefore, we bring up the grade to hide that lowest level. And, you know, it's done elsewhere. I can see in neighborhoods where it's done, here's this house, here's this house, retaining wall next to it. And it's, you know, it's I can't say that that stormwater is going to stay where it belongs.
Member Stewart? Member Brindle, I didn't mean to cut you off, are you
Well
You want, you have another question or comment?
No, I've, I've hit it all.
Okay. Member Stewart?
I was reminded of member Brindle's comments. I believe the last time you were in front of us, I asked if you were bringing in fill, and the answer is no. I just want to confirm that.
I just want to clarify that, because I, we're, we're not bringing in fill to the floodway. That's the concern that the engineers and the drainage people are concerned about. We're bringing in fill to the front yard. That's it. So it's not to the floodway.
How much?
Haven't done a calculation, but per that
One truckload?
No.
More than that?
More than that.
Two truckloads?
More than that.
Okay, because I did ask that question last time, and I got a different answer, so I am
Well, the answer hasn't changed, so maybe, maybe I articulated it incorrectly, or you heard it wrong, but the floodway, where there's a cut fill requirement. So anything we, anything we add, which by the way, we're going to be adding a little bit to the floodway we add, which by the way, we're going to be adding a little bit to the floodway to get the driveway to work to come around, but anything we add to the floodway, we have to prove to the engineers, to the city, that we've removed that. And we talked about the bathtub last time? So, that's what we were talking about.
Because I think, and I echo the mayor's comments about, I think we gave you a lot more feedback than just try harder. I think we gave you a lot of detailed feedback, and I am not happy to read in your letter that that's what you heard. And the things that I found particularly troubling, that front door level is certainly one of them. The other, for me, was the retaining walls. It feels like it's relative to the rest of the neighborhood, it's sort of building up that, I don't want to say fortress, but I'm stuck with that, is, it just, it feels like it's putting this thing above everybody else in ways that are, and then the multi-layers of retaining walls are especially sort of defensive, if you will. So, and I don't think any of that has been addressed at all, and so I'm still troubled by that, so...
Well, as I tried to explain in the presentation, we have to start at 862.2, and unless we do a front-load garage and basically eliminate that fill that you're referring to in those walls, you're going to end up with a three-story house. And we've talked about it, and we've looked at that, and we thought that that was less palatable than what we have presented now.
And I will say this, it's a very difficult challenge. I don't envy you trying to design on a very tough spot with tough constraints, including the right-of-way for the sewer line and that kind of thing. I just, but I also, you know, we have to be concerned with this, the concept of what's right for everybody in the neighborhood, not just for this site, and I'm feeling kind of stuck on that point, and I'd love to have you help me get past that.
Well, something Member Brindle said earlier, the reality is, in today's world, if we were going to develop Edina or develop the street, you're not going to develop the street. You're not going to develop this cul-de-sac where it is. It would be, it'd be in a floodplain. That whole cul-de-sac's in a floodplain. It's not going to happen. So, we've created, we've created the best home we can with the restrictions that we have around us. If you forget the aesthetic, let's just forget what it looks like. If you don't like the look of it, as you mentioned, that's a subjective decision, but if you go to the math that I talked about earlier, put that math together, and you're kind of there. Now, your choices are going to be, do you want, how do you want to get to the front door? Do you want to come in, come up to 862 and go right to the front door, and then have two more stories above that? Or do you want to pedestal your way up through the landscaping, which it won't be as raw as it's shown there, there's going to be trees, and there's going to be softscaping, it's not going to be as harsh as it is right now? Do you want to get there that way? Those are really, as we start in design, that's really their two choices that we can see based on the site and the restrictions that are here. So, I understand, and I echo your concern. We've been dealing with your concern for 12 months, trying to figure out how to make this palatable. And again, we have to consider what our homeowner wants, too, but the reality is the math. So, the floodway, the changing of the FEMA floodway exacerbates that. Now, why would the neighbors want this? Getting that house out of that floodway, the current home, which the city desperately wants as well, this is our opportunity to do that. We can't have everything, unfortunately, with a site like this. I don't know how else to answer it for you than that.
I don't think you should try to speak for the neighbors. I don't think that's appropriate. I'd actually like to see the house, the front door of the house, at 862. We don't have a rendering like that, do we? Because for me personally, I'm less concerned about the height than the relative position of the doorway at 872.7 to 867. I mean, it just looks so out of character with the house next door that, you know, I think, and then that would probably cause you to, well, let me ask it this way, let me ask a question. If you went to 862, would you need to infill the lot? Would you still need these retaining walls, and would you need to bring in fill? And if so, how much? And how would it look different than it does now in this drawing, with all the retaining walls and all the additional material in there?
Just give me one second. This isn't a perfect visualization, but you can see his garage door is at 862, so you'd have a line through here. Now, keep in mind the rest of the mass, that's not going to change.
Right.
So, you'd have a, you'd have a line coming across here. Would you need this retaining wall? Probably not. You could probably berm everything up to this new spot, and you would come up the driveway into that front-load garage. But then you'd have, this is what I was saying earlier, you have three stories of siding that you're looking at versus soft transition of landscape up to the house.
Yeah, well, but to me, that might be better, because look at what he's looking at now from the other side. He's looking at, what do you have there? 12 feet of concrete wall below the first floor? It looks like it's all just this big concrete retaining wall, not retaining wall, but this elevation right here.
Here?
Yeah. I mean, who wants to look at that? I wouldn't think the owner would even want to look at that. It's like...
Versus siding? That's what you're talking about, the difference between, because that's what you're going to see one or the other?
Is that siding, or is that just concrete?
Well, in either case, you're going to see, you're going to see a wall, and what the wall has on it, you know, that's probably going to be siding, right?
You're going to bring the whole house down if you're bringing the front door down to 862?
No.
No, okay.
See, what you'll have is, you'll still have three stories.
All right. Okay. Why do they look at siding? But to me, to me, you would have been better off coming in here asking for a height variance, if you would have indeed needed a height variance. You wouldn't have needed it.
I don't need one.
Yeah.
I'm actually five feet below where I could be.
Get the front door down to 862. I think it would, I think it would actually, as big as that lot is, it might fit the character of the neighborhood better.
Oh, yeah, you've had your finger in there for a long time.
Because I think the discussion going on, it's important for council to know that I think we have a time issue in terms of what your options are tonight to act. So, Mr. Teague, maybe you could explain that?
Yes, as you recall, at the November meeting, we extended the 60-day rule, so tonight is the final night, so we do have to take action unless the applicant is willing to extend. Just to let you know the time restraint that we're on.
Okay. All right. Let me just step aside from that issue for a moment. Mr. Porter, let me go over to Mr. Milner. I'm looking at the schematic that shows the sewer, sanitary sewer main coming through the property, and it's just, I'm looking at it from the creek side to the right of the house. And Mr. Porter's put the house on, Mr. Porter, why don't you stay up here? Just put the house to the right or to the west of the main sewer line. Is there any kind of structure that could be above the main sewer line? Because one of the things we heard from somebody, and it was either in live testimony or in writing, was, what if they built a different kind of house that had a breezeway across, or some kind of a porch across the top of the sanitary sewer drain, and then, I don't know if you can build to the, I'll call it the east of the sewer drain or not?
So, I think the concerns, just like Mr. Porter brought up, the majority of that property on the east side of the sanitary main is in the floodway. So, you're dealing with that same issue.
That was your comment earlier.
Could you do it? If the floodway wasn't there, then we'd have concerns if we ever have to repair that main by digging. How do we dig underneath a breezeway? So, I think the bigger thing is, it's in the floodway, and there's just very limited space on that side to do anything other than the very front yard.
Sure, it is what it is.
So, it's in the floodway is the biggest constraint on that side.
Mr. Porter, you and your client have to decide if you want to extend. Unless you think you're going to get a positive vote out of this council, you might. I don't know, other people haven't commented. You know, as we try to find a solution here for you and your client and the neighborhood, I don't, personally, I don't think we're there yet.
I don't think that the extension would satisfy, because I think there'd be new concerns. I think that once you see what we're talking about in a visual format, that's not going to feel anywhere near the character of the neighborhood. So, I, not, I appreciate the offer, but I just don't think that that's going to matter.
All right. So, let me ask Director Teague, if this request were denied, when could, well, what then? Is he limited to coming back to us for a year? Or could he just go redesign a different house and come back, or what?
Right. The plans would have to substantially change. Yeah, he couldn't come back with the same plan, but they would have to substantially be different.
It's a strange thing. It's a beautiful piece of property, creek on three sides, got that sewer main going through there, it messes everything up. It's out of character with the neighborhood. I mean, there's just so many strange things here. But I thought Member Stewart said it well. We don't, we can't just look at this in isolation, we've got to look at it in the context of the neighborhood, too, so...
Mr. Mayor?
We get, Member Fisher, your comment?
Yeah, and then I can make a motion coming out of it, if that's okay, but I, too, was really troubled by the try harder comment in the letter, and it actually caused me to go back and watch the Dugon meeting again. And it felt like not only all of us, but, you know, many people in the public hearing were very articulate about what the problems were, and it wasn't just try harder, it was, and frankly, I could care less about the peak and the height of the peak. That's not, I don't think that's what's bothering people. I think what's bothering people, as it was articulated again tonight, is the threshold level, the first floor, and part of it is, these sites are essentially pretty level. And so, this idea of, you know, we expect in a natural, rolling hillside kind of neighborhood that houses go, move up and down, and certainly the door heights are going to be different. But in essentially flat block, what we've created here is this artificial perch that you're putting a house on, and then, you know, lower in the site, you would make up for any floodplain that you fill, but it's the retaining walls, it's the, it's that, the sense that it just doesn't match. And, you know, it was a lengthy discussion. The idea was to go and see if there's another design solution. In my mind, I thought we were clear that it would have very little to do with the peak. It would be what, how could you reconfigure a house on this site? To me, when you look at this sort of situation, you either come at it, you know, you're looking to build a house for your family, you can fall in love with a house plan and go find a site to fit that plan on, or you can fall in love with a site and then design to fit that site. I think part of the problem here is that there's a house plan that wants to fit on this site, and the two aren't compatible. And it's a beautiful house plan. It would be a beautiful house. It would be a beautiful house on many sites. I just don't know that it, you know, that plan can fit exactly here. And one of the telling things for me through this process is, so it was a four-to-two vote on the planning commission. The two negative votes were both architects. I talked to both of them, and of what they're, and they expressed their concerns, very similar to what here. We've had architects that were in the public hearing talking. We've actually gotten an email from an architect. In every case, they're kind of like scratching their heads, like, what's the problem? Design something for this site. And I tend to agree, that I think stylistically, you could make some changes and probably get reasonably close to the square footage you need. It's probably not a house like this, but I think it's possible. If it's not, you know, then I think at the end of the day, you have to let the site dictate what can be built there. And would it be nice to grant a variance to allow it to happen? Of course, but one of the primary things that we have to look out for in granting a variance is, does it have a negative impact on the surrounding property owners? And I couldn't approve this variance in good conscience and believe that it wouldn't have a negative impact on not only the immediate neighbor, but, you know, if you think about it, if we artificially elevate this site, because this house plan is desirable, eventually it's going to impact every property. And I know that was actually one of the points of staff, is like, well, maybe over time we elevate, but where does that, I don't know that that's the right solution. I don't think it is. You know, I think you just have to take what the site's giving you and design the best house you can design there, and that would be the appropriate solution. So, I would make a motion that we deny the variance request.
All right, there's a resolution in favor and a resolution opposing. The resolution opposing is 2017-147. And then let me pass down to you, Member Fisher, on the hard copy of that, and take a look at the point, 2.03, the kind of line that's here, I'm not sure of that language. If you wanted to otherwise suggest the adoption of that ordinance, I'm thinking that language in 2.03 is unnecessary and maybe inappropriate.
All right, so my motion would be to adopt Resolution 2017-147, a resolution denying the variance with the modification of Section 2, Article 2.03, where we basically delete everything after the first sentence. So, what 2.03 would read is, the applicant has not demonstrated that a new home cannot be built on the property without the benefit of the first-floor height variance as requested.
The rest of that section referenced, they could do it without a basement, and I didn't think that was probably a factual finding we wanted to make, because there's a lot of reasons why this can be done without having to have that language in there. Anyway, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we're in a discussion, we'll wait a moment for Member Staunton to come back. Any further discussion here? Member Brindle or Member Stewart?
I was just saying, I suspect Member Staunton's back is bothering him. I don't know that he'll be back.
Oh.
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay. All right. We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I will just, both of the resolutions are 2017-147. I just want to make sure that there is a distinction between them, so we know exactly which one we're voting on.
Yeah, I think Member Fisher said it was 2017-147, the denial motion.
Right, right, and I guess, I guess what threw me off is they're, they're both the same number, and if that's, if that's okay...
Yep.
Okay, all right.
The one that, yeah, the one that we don't use doesn't exist.
Oh, well, okay, all right.
Member Staunton, we've got a motion and a second on the denial of the variance request. And we're just in this discussion phase. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have one thing that, I'll vote for the motion. I, you know, what occurs to me is something Mr. Porter said. He said, you want to have it all, but I think that the applicant wants to have it all, too. I mean, you've got a site that basically isn't as big as it seems, because it's got a sewer line running through it, and it's got a floodplain. Yeah, you want to have the full three stories and the full square footage without designing to try to find more solutions, and I think, I think there's got to be some give and take here to get to the, to both meet the character of the neighborhood, which is one of the criteria of the variance, as well as try to make it as, you know, attractive and livable a property as possible. And I don't, I feel like you're looking to have exactly the house you want on exactly the lot without any give in light of the fact that you've got a property that isn't as big as it seems like it is on its face.
Okay.
And I don't know if you've made any changes to the draft resolution.
We did, Member Fisher recommended deletion of that last sentence, the last two sentences.
You know, I guess I'd just suggest, could we add a finding, and maybe it's already in there, noting the fact that because of the sewer line, the existing sewer line and the floodplain, the buildable area of the lot is significantly smaller than it otherwise appears.
Is that a, just a statement of fact?
Right.
It sounds like it is, but...
Right, but I think it's one of the things that underlies why I am...
Right, okay.
You know, I understand, basically, I think the rub here is that the applicant is coming in wanting to build a house that could be built on a lot that had no restrictions. And yet, the lot has a ton of restrictions, and so it can't really be built on that.
So you would suggest adding another...
Maybe another factual...
2.06 would read as, would state your...
That because of the sewer line and the floodplain, the buildable area of the lot is significantly smaller than it appears.
Friendly amendment?
Yes, I accept that.
Member, Member Brindle is the second, or you accept that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I was, could I just make one more comment here? The, under the findings, you know, in 2.01, it's interesting, the last sentence says the applicant could construct a rambler or split entry home, which would be in keeping with the essential character of the neighborhood. From my opinion, it could be a modern home with glass and, it's not about, you know, does it, you know, this whole thing with roof peaks and all that, it's like, people like that, but there are beautiful, modern homes that are a completely different architectural style that fit into neighborhoods because they fit, you know, the, all the other things that we're talking about. So I don't want this to read that somehow, you know, you have to do a rambler, it doesn't work, because certainly other options would work.
So do you want to take out the words, a rambler or split entry?
Maybe the applicant could construct, could construct other style homes, or homes of other styles that would be in keeping with the essentials. And so we're not saying it has to be a rambler or anything else, it's just...
You got that, Member, or Director Teague? All right, Member Brindle, friendly amendment, are you okay with that one?
Yep, that's fine.
All right, any other...
Mayor?
Yes?
I would also suggest in paragraph 2.2, you should add, the first floor elevation of the new home and front door are too high, because you mentioned the front door.
Okay.
Okay, and that is 2.02.
2.02.
As part of 02.
First floor elevation.
All right, gotcha. Comfortable with that, Member Fisher? Member Brindle?
Yes.
All right. Any other proposed changes? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the denial of the variance request as embodied and amended 2017-147, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you. All right, next matter we have in front of us is a matter that Director Teague has as well, which is the sketch plan review on Pentagon, what we call Pentagon Park North.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'll just quickly tee it up and let the applicant present the details. So what we're looking at here this evening is a sketch plan of the two western parcels of Pentagon North. It's about 10, a little under 11 acres in size of the 27 acre north Pentagon Park property. Current zoning is MDD 6. As you recall, there's been a preliminary rezoning to PUD, that development has not moved forward. What the applicant will be showing you this evening is a proposal for two five-story residential buildings, one market rate and one senior, 550 units. This one would require a comprehensive plan amendment to increase density from 30 units an acre to 60 units an acre, and then a new overall development plan for the whole of the site. In regard to affordable housing, what they're suggesting here is that it would be located on another property that's owned by the property owner, so not specifically within this project. Should this plan move forward, they would have to obviously give us more detail of how that affordable housing would look with a formal application. So with that, I will introduce the applicant, Joe McElwain, to present the project.
Thank you. Mr. McElwain, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I've been told that everyone has already seen the presentation, correct? And the proposal?
Yeah, so Director Teague, did you have a conversation with Mr. McElwain about length of his presentation?
Yes, between 10, 15 minutes.
Okay.
I was told 10 minutes, but I was told that you guys have already seen my presentation. So I was not going to go...
Well, it's part of our packet.
Okay.
Yeah, and some of us probably watched the planning commission meeting.
Okay, that was my understanding. So I was not going to go over the entire proposal. Again, I think everyone's quite familiar with it, I can, but I was going to just have a few comments and then get right into Q and A if that's, if that's...
Yeah, so to your, to your point, if you were assuming we were well prepared, we are.
I am assuming, yeah. So I am Joe McElwain, I'm with Chase Real Estate out of Burnsville. We are the developer and we would be the owner and the builder of this project. Last week, we did have planning commission, we received some positive comments with the direction we're going, and some constructive criticism, that I think is helpful for us to sharpen our pencils as we keep, as we keep working. We have a lot ahead of us, but we are committed to continue to improve our plans and work with Kerry and staff on creating a highly successful project for next year. Our proposal, we believe, is very strong, which is to bring two complementary use residential buildings, to start a community that is diverse in age and needs and activities. And this project will kickstart the West 77th Street Public Improvements, and it will jumpstart the new park plans for the Fred, in creating for a new and enhanced pedestrian-oriented residential community. Following us will be the affordable housing development, which we will, which we anticipate will be in for sketch plan early next year. This will occur before we submit for formal approvals. I know that Hillcrest is working on an agreement with one of the most experienced local housing developers to bring a significant number of affordable apartment homes to Pentagon Park North. We are one part of a master redevelopment plan, a significant one, the first phase, and we wouldn't be this committed to the project if we weren't confident in the master developer delivering on the city's goals and the planning principles for Pentagon Park. So back to those comments from the planning commission meeting, from my notes, I wrote down the following: Bring something unique to the Fred. Keep thinking about the courtyards and connections. Consider meandering sidewalks. And work on the wow factor. We are currently looking at some beautiful architectural projects in the city as guidelines for our project. I think what we're showing today is strong and headed in the right direction. We want to, and we will keep strengthening the design. Enduring architecture is our goal, with lots of brick, stone, metal, and large windows. And there will be moments of more contemporary design with lots of glass that can break the traditional mold and bring design interest. Let me just forward, I know you've seen a lot of this presentation already, but there's a lot of building here. There's over 750,000 square feet of building when you include the underground parking garages. And what we're looking at here, what I'm showing, is some of those moments that we're thinking about. This would be the residential building, the market rate building on the corner as you enter that middle street. So we're thinking, like I said, of moments where you have lots of glass in the corners, the two-story lobby could be very open and transparent to activity along West 77th. And another comment that I heard last week was thinking about setting back that fifth story. So in that bottom right image is kind of a precedent, it's a downtown project in front of Viking Stadium, some other considerations that we'll continue to work on. So we are ready to go now, and our investment, and with our investment, I'm sure that we will spur more development in the near future with future phases. And those future phases may be more housing or a mix.
Be more of a principal.
It may be mixed use and some commercial. We don't know yet. It is our plan to likely be part of that future, but this is a significant investment now, with a proposal that we and our team have to focus all of our energy on now. This is a legacy project for our team. We hope to receive your support, your recommendations and insight tonight, and so we can dive deeper and take this into the next steps. And with that, I can take questions from you. Yes?
Member Fisher, you want to lead us off?
Well, I, I mean, I think the uses are fine. I mean, so that's, you always want to get that one out of the way first. I know there were comments about more mixed use, and I do think in this sort of area, that would be really difficult to mix the uses in the buildings. I think on a master development level, if there was a potential to have some mixed use, that's more of where the discussion would have to happen. You know, if you had some office in one of the buildings or something like that. But I don't think we would want to try and force something into these buildings, other than, you know, what you would do to support your residential community. The one comment I would have is, I think, and this gets back to the master development part of this, is we have to be extremely intentional about the entrances to the Fred Richards Park. And I know your particular piece is a little bit off to the side of that, but potentially to the east of Building 2, you know, depending on how that works, that might be some element of in and out of the park that we might want to think about. But just in general, I guess my comments on, and I know this is, it's sketch plan, it's not final design, what I would say is, and I liked where you were going with the comments about those corners, and, you know, just recognize that you're on what's going to be an incredible park. And make this about that special place, not, you know, so it feels like, wow, these wouldn't make sense anywhere else. You know, my first glance at it was, wow, that looks like an apartment complex. And I think with some tweaking and some effort, it can really feel more special than that. And it's going to have to do with materials, but it's also, I think, and some of the planning commissioners mentioned this, you know, thinking about how you sort of tie your open spaces toward, with the park and just how you do all that. I don't have any, you know, real highly specific suggestions for you, but I think I would think of it that way. And again, I, the struggle here is just to try and understand this holistically, the whole master plan of the north side, and make sure that it's all making sense. So...
Thank you.
There's my ramblings.
Thank you. Yeah. Member Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not familiar with Chase Real Estate. Tell me about some successful projects you guys have worked on before.
Our latest one was V2 Apartments in St. Paul. That was part of a, and then before that, it was, well, it was V1. Victoria Park is actually three phases of market rate apartments around a 40-acre park right off Shepherd Road. V2 opened in December, we actually received...
So it's the one between Shepherd Road and the river?
It's right up on Shepherd on the, on the Bluff.
Oh, on the Bluff, okay.
Off Auto, and if you're familiar with St. Paul. You see those two towers now, maybe you go to the hockey games, you'll see those two towers rising up. So, and those are five-story buildings. But on the corners, we actually did a two-story loft, so it helped break up that roof, you know, that, they are higher, but they're two-story open spaces within the unit. So that was a recent project. Before that was the Flats at Cedar Grove, which is another city redevelopment next to the Paragon Outlet Mall, right south of the airport. Before that was more Victoria Park and St. Paul. Before that is more St. Paul work at the intersection of I-35 and West 7th.
Right. And so would you be, to echo what Member Fisher was talking about with respect to the master plan for this north side and in this whole map of what's shown here, would the intention be that Chase would ultimately develop this whole thing that we're looking at?
That would be a lot. That's 28 acres. We're, like I mentioned in my comments, we're focused on that first 10 acres. It's kind of this perfect start to whatever happens next. We're intentional and maybe taking on more, but it's really, it, we're not going to provide hundreds and hundreds of units. That's why we provided a mixed, a senior component with market rate.
Right.
I think it will be a wait-and-see game. I think this is a two to three-year, future phases are two to three years out, and see what the market brings. It could be, it could be owner condos in the future.
So on the screen we're looking at now, these two buildings to the left, which are pretty significant when you measure out how big they are, those would be the, you'd build those two simultaneously?
Yeah, we would. We also, and our construction company, who builds a lot throughout the metro, it would be near simultaneously. I mean, this is one phase. So the senior property would probably be a few months behind, but all at one time.
Right. All right. So I, one of the things that makes me a little uncomfortable, and I think it echoes what Member Fisher was saying, that this, sort of this whole north end, I think it's important to understand the master plan for the whole thing and to understand how it all fits together. I agree tremendously that the entryway to the park, which would, I think, be in that corridor just to the east of your buildings, is going to be vitally important, both as an amenity for this whole area, but also for us as a city, thinking about our city park there. So I'd like to make sure that we collectively collaborate on that. I believe there's a very high water table here, which limits what you might be able to do with parking. I'm not a big fan of all the surface parking. I don't know if that means we need to look at some structured parking, but it's, that's one of the things that may be a sticking point for me. And then, if we're thinking about parking, I don't know if, I guess, depending on, well, so for this use, if it were a office park or something, we might be able to have a discussion about some shared parking for the Fred Richards Park on weekends, you know, when it's going to be in highest use versus if it were a business park, the weekday use during the week for the, for the business park. But if this is primarily senior living, then I don't think it's, makes sense to have a strategic discussion about that. In the planning commission comments, somebody referred to the architectural style as Soviet. I trust that this is an early sketch, so I don't think we have to worry too much. And I do think the photographs you just showed of some of the treatments you might have, it's a, that's a big help. So thank you for thinking about that. And then, yeah, I'd love to find a way to not surround this all with all that surface parking and have a little more green treatment to some of that instead. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
So if affordable housing is not built in Block 1 or Block 2, where would affordable housing be built?
When you say Block 1 or Block 2...
Uh-huh.
Do I have, do we have the overall in this? I'm sorry. Where the affordable is being proposed is one...
It's the Walsh Title Site.
It's the Walsh Title Site? Okay. All right.
So this has all been coordinated together with our master developer of delivering these projects somewhat simultaneously, or us starting first.
Okay. Let's see. With one of these buildings being market rate apartments and one being senior, I'm looking at as blocks 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 develop what they can become and how it can organize itself. So Block number 1 is the one on the west, Block number 2 is the H, and then the future blocks are numbered there. And so if we have market and then senior, then how are we going to... And so if we have market and then senior, then how are we going to, as I look at three, four, five, six and seven, not that we're worried about those today, but what we do here in one and two, as you say, is the catalyst. It sets it up. So that would be my concern. How does, what does this set in place for the future of three, four, five, six and There are some distinct stormwater areas here, and they're labeled as swales, which are just little indents in the ground that'll trap water until the water dissipates into the ground. Is there any thought of actually creating a space for water to exist rather than these being stormwater swales?
Well, the swales would be like 48-hour swales. They're filtration systems.
Right.
I don't, currently the site is much higher than its surroundings. You brought up the 100-year floodplain. The middle of the street in front of us is roughly the 100-year floodplain. So if you notice here, there is existing water on site, but that's much lower than what the average grade plane will be once we redevelop our 10 acres. So what my point is, is that we'll be too high to just simply hold water. It would be, it would have to be the goal of holding water, just to hold water on site.
So are you raising the grade?
No, it will be, we're going to use existing grade and just level it out on an average sense. Right now, if you notice, the buildings are kind of sloped up and bermed.
Right.
We're going to take that and be more of, our goal is to have the-
Well, the buildings weren't sloped up and bermed when they were built.
No, true. They brought in fill in order to get out the 100-year floodplain.
Right.
But they're much higher than the 100-year floodplain.
Right.
It literally is.
And then the parking lots sank.
Yeah, because there's not fill below the parking lots.
Right.
Because that's all peat and it soaks water and just sinks. So we have to bring in an enormous amount of engineering, engineered soil.
Yep.
But we're going to keep the buildings as a whole, the average elevation low, so that we can keep our accessibility and you're not going to see a lot of exposed basement.
All right. Well, shared parking is very important. We need hundreds of parking spaces for activities in the park. So you're going to have passive activities, you're going to have athletic activities, you're going to be, you're going to have people who are going to come here to use the regional trail. So we need, we have significant need for shared parking along the park. And so the parking you have shown here, there is also parking underground, right?
Yeah, our entire footprint of the senior, which normally most of them aren't, we're going to park the whole thing and then we're going to park the entire rectangle, including the courtyards for our-
Right.
-market rate building.
Okay.
And then right now, we're proposing about 40 shared stalls on our property, but there'll be much more in future phases.
Right.
Or they'll be used interim. I mean, hopefully Fred starts working on plans and coordination with us, you know, with their construction drawings, and then we know their plans after we build our property.
Sure. Okay. All right. Let's see here. Things that are important to consider as you are, as you continue to think about this, sustainability, green roofs, LEED standards. I don't know if you're going to go for LEED certification, but LEED standards are certainly important. We'd like, this is a perfect area to be innovative from a sustainability standpoint. So solar to the degree that it can be put in place here. And to the degree that you can create water as a feature, I think that'd be nice. Parks do provide stormwater relief for adjacent properties, but water's going to go where water's going to go. And it can be, as we have found at Centennial Lakes, we created an area that would trap stormwater so we could have water as a feature. And it's lovely. And it's our most often visited park. So I think that is something that would make this very attractive. So while you have some swales that will, for short periods, trap some water and let it filter through, it might be nice to create something that wanders through the area because ultimately, we might be just thinking about one and two today, but up here, we're thinking about all seven of them and how they're going to knit together over time. And what is it that's going to be the common element that creates the theme, no matter who develops, three and four and five and six and seven? Parking. We are kind of at a, I think we're coming to a turning point in how we consider parking. There are people who don't want to own a car at all. There are people who are millennials who don't yet have driver's licenses because they, they don't want it. They're going to live where transit is, they're going to live close to where they work, but in any case, they don't want to hassle with the car. And so to the degree that this could attract a person like that, maybe, because it is transit available right down 77th. And so to the degree that, that this could be attractive to that individual, it might be nice to market to that individual and then adjust parking accordingly, if that's possible. Or have this be the Zipcar hub of the Southdale area. If somebody needs a car to go someplace, it's, you know, they take it and they go and they come back and that's their use of the car and this is where they go to get it. And right now, there's certain corners of downtown Minneapolis, and there's a couple of cars here, a couple of cars, and that, that could be something that, that could be here. Let's see. And then just some beautiful outside areas. We have this short, wonderful season when people like to be outside, and I know you're adjacent to a park here, but it would be nice also to have in these spaces between the buildings, because this could create some really beautiful little spaces where people feel like they're in a room, but they're outside. So maybe a gazebo and-
Little pocket parks.
Yeah, exactly.
We call them zen gardens.
Exactly. And, and something that makes them really enjoy where they are. Because these apartments are small. From what I read, they're, they're medium to small. I didn't see anything that made me think that if I moved in here, I'd have a lot of room. And so I think that outer space is going to be important. But I would like to see, and I know these are just rough drawings, they're just blocks, if you will, but, but utilize that roof, make it green, make it active. And we were chuckling up here during your presentation about setting back the top story. Please do that. There is, you can create this great walk area around that upper story. It's a completely different experience than you have on the other floors, so it makes it a really desired place. But also undulation. I know we're not looking at that today, but undulation as it stands from, from the elevation, where you've got different materials, but undulation when you're looking at a wall, so that it's not just a sheer wall. So those kinds of things would be things I would be looking for. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you put up the last slide that we had up?
Yes.
It's the one with all the arrows around the site.
Oh. Am I walking this one?
No, one more. One more, one more. It's one with the colored access arrows, the whole side of the whole maximum there.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I think this is an, you know, to me, this is the, the most important slide because it talks about the overall vision, which is what we're concerned about, how this will interface with the park. And when I first saw it, I thought, well, this is kind of interesting, the, the path around the buildings that creates almost a separate parkway, if you will, off of 77th, behind the buildings, between the buildings and the park. And we've talked about right now how stark the differences between the green park and the concrete jungle to the south of it. And it has the potential, but then I looked at some aerial photographs and I realized that's kind of what's there now, is just a bunch of parking and concrete. So, you know, what I, I assume these are head-in stalls all the way around and you're using them for parking?
Yes. One thing that I did describe last week at Planning Commission, that this is, it, just our 10 acres is 1,000 by 400 feet. And sometimes looking at things just in plan, we always look at the gray. And what I was trying to show was, showcase was that normally we would have streets on all sides of our property, so we need access around our buildings for fire trucks. And part of the goal too was to connect east and west, so that everybody on this 28 acres could flow through this site. So that's why we're working on a meandering, you see it Excelsior and Grand, so that you don't see these long corridors of streets.
Right.
There's many plantings.
And maybe parallel parking instead of head-on parking.
I think we could.
I mean, I know you get fewer spaces, but you get more of a feel of a parkway and you start to blur that line between the park.
Angled off of-
Or maybe angled, but, but not that, you know, and, and actually you probably can narrow it up if you, you know, if you don't have to have it on both sides and then maybe you get a little more space to work with.
Yeah, it'll be a challenge. We are underparked pretty significantly to Coke now, and we can't do two levels of underground parking because of the high water table. So it's this math equation of, and then there's the shared parking for the Fred.
Right.
So we'll do our best to break up and do plenty of tree islands and site views that end in trees and not just streets.
And then the other big thing for me is the, is the kind of way it interfaces in terms of access to the park and, and the color coding of number eight here suggests entry between the last two on the east side, but it also suggests entry on the kind of eastern boundary of your two parcels, yet when I see your design, it doesn't really show entry there.
Yeah, we've, we've met with the Parks Director and at this time, they don't know exactly where that entry will be. So we've, that's why we don't want to interfere with that entry. It could happen right after our 10 and a half acres and we'll design for that. At this moment, I think we're planning, you know, for an entry that could happen right after a property or at that second location. Currently, it's actually this east-west connection off of Parkland.
Right. And so I just, I mean, I just flagged for you, I guess it's, it shouldn't be a surprise, but that's a real important, how we, how we blur the line between the park and the development. And I think it's to your advantage. I mean, I think that becomes a huge amenity for the people who want to be in your buildings is to have a feeling like they're on this big backyard that they get to use. And so the more you put obstacles between it or obstacles to accessing it, I think you're, you're, I mean, I think our interests are aligned there, where it'll be good for your residents if you're, if you're providing greater access and teeing us up to have greater access. And then the more you can do from 77th Street to highlight that so that, you know, and I did see you had some visual corridor notes and the like, but, and a little bit of that is outside of the scope that you're tackling here, but it is, anything we can do to say park along that corridor to the immediate east of your two parcels. You know, again, less parking, more green, something that signals to somebody going by that this is a way to get to the park, even if you're going to go up and have to turn right to get to the park. But the, the notion as somebody's coming by in 77th that, hey, back there is a, is a park, and a little bit of that Excelsior and Grand, you see that where you can kind of see, if you look down the street, you start to see there's a park on the other end of it. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I just wanted to amend a couple of things. I want to concur with some things that I heard, Member Brindle mentioned affordable housing. I'm not comfortable with having a phase of this grand development go forward without affordable housing being part of it. So I'm, I would resist having you dig a shovel in until we had affordable housing being part of something.
We understand that they're all contingent on each other.
Yeah. I just wanted to be clear on that. Also, the green elements, the sustainability elements that I think Member Brindle also mentioned, I think those are important. I think we've seen some, in the last six to 12 months, I think we've seen some really creative elements of some of the projects that have been in front of us, some of which haven't gone further than sketch plan, actually, but I encourage you to contemplate what's our, we've got staff people at the city who work on some of those things, will be very familiar with them, and I'm sure they'd be happy to collaborate with you to, to find out how to do that. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about, and I mentioned before, my concern with all of this surface parking. As you look at the south boundary of your two properties, you know, West 77th Street, there is not exactly a bicycle or pedestrian-friendly place, although there is a sidewalk there, if I'm not mistaken.
We will be providing the new boulevard.
Okay.
It'll be a 10-foot boulevard and then a new eight-foot pedestrian and bike.
Right.
That will be on our, part of our development.
But my point about, talking about the pedestrian experience from that angle, and actually really from any, is I, I do want to have this feeling of engagement between the, the buildings and the property and the people who are outside of it. So I, I don't know how to achieve that necessarily, but you understand what I'm getting at there.
Well, yeah, I think, well, may I? If, we, we may work with the city about maybe meandering that path versus just a straight 1,000-foot-long-
Right.
-straight pass.
But again, on the second building, there's a lot of surface parking in between those and I, again, I, I don't know, I don't know. I, you, if you are underparked, I keep going back to thinking about structured parking, but I, I don't, I'm not doing the math for you either, so. Anyway, those are some of my additional thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add one more thought?
Yeah.
The more I look at this, the more, I actually think the potential, as you develop this design, that early on, I mean, I don't remember how many schemes ago this was, you know, we really, at least I was advocating for keeping some sort of a parkway on the north side of buildings. And, you know, at first you look at this and you think, well, it looks like a lot of parking, but when you kind of squint your eyes and think in the fuzzy world, it actually can be that parkway. And I know it's a dual challenge, because you need every parking spot you can get, but I think, you know, it's in the details. And I think that's something to focus on, but I actually, when you really look at it, the connectivity that that provides is really pretty incredible. And so long-term, for the benefit of the park and, you know, the neighbors that will all be living on, on this side, I think it can be really beneficial. And maybe it's, you know, maybe you still have to do the head-in parking on both sides, but depending on the width of it, can you make, you know, even, dare I say, down the middle, you know, you know, an element that's a little bit more parkway-like? Just as you're looking at it, start thinking about it in those terms. And to Councilmember Stewart's comment, the part that just sort of jumps out at me is the parking on the south side of the senior housing. Now, I'm assuming that's more the visitor parking there? Is that an intention?
Yeah, it's visitor and that's where a lot of guests arrive and that's where we have the portcachera. And we originally faced the buildings, but we thought for wayfinding and such, it'd be difficult, especially for the senior property, to have not a president, presence off the main road. So we rotated the building.
Yeah, if it's, if it's the only one that has that and you have the main entry, it's probably, has a different message- probably, has a different message there. And maybe that works fine because I do think you have to make your visitor parking pretty obvious in that, that building. So it, it might not be as.
Yeah, we counter it with a lot of green space in the market rate.
Right.
Or the market project, if you could see this view that I'm looking at.
So I, I appreciate the challenge you're facing with the, you know, the lack of ability to go down more than one level underground. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to touch on that too, if you want to go back to the Guiding Principles slide. That I like, you know, that, that lateral view that you just showed us was helpful because I like the way the green space, uh, meets the street, uh, in your market rate building, furthest to the left on the screen. I think that's a terrific sort of sensation when you're coming on Seventy-seventh Street to have all that green space there. Even with what's there now is helpful, but this will be terrific to have all that green space, uh, on the market, around the market rate apartment. I still am troubled a little bit by the, the guest parking for the senior resident building that you've just gone to a band of greenery along the street and, um, and the rest of us all taken up with guest parking. And I'm not sure what's required for guest parking. Excuse me, or what else could be done there to create a, a greener environment that's more compatible with what you're showing over at the market rate building, but you could think about it. Uh, with respect to the, uh, you know, you've got a label number two, which is the Integrated Stormwater, which Member Brindle will talk to you about. You're showing, uh, pedestrian campus connections on the building side, but once you walk across the parking lot, uh, are we seeing, you know, I see number five, uh, potential shared parking. You've got all those spots marked, but i- it strikes me that along that waterway, uh, it ought to not be something that feels to you like you, you parked your car next to a ditch full of water. That ought to be a nice water feature and there ought to be some kind of a walkway along the water feature. I think if we don't have a walkway along that water feature, we're really missing something important. So, uh, and you've got it, I think on, um, no, you don't have anything on that side, label number six, on that north side.
We have a dog park.
You know, what's, if you're going to have a water, water as an amenity, well then, make sure it is indeed an amenity, that you can cross it periodically, you can also walk along it and pick your, pick your spot to walk across. So sidewalk along the Integrated Stormwater features is important, I think. You face a problem that we talked about with some other folks from time to time. I think bank comes to mind over along the promenade. You've, you've got a situation here where you basically have four front doors. Uh, you've got your Seventy-seventh, uh, and you've got your park side, and then you've got, you know, what people are looking at, uh, in, uh, you know, to the east and west, depending on which building you're in. So, uh, you'll have to be, really be careful about your architecture and, and beef it up and, and make sure that it doesn't get too ponderous in some locations. And I like what I'm seeing so far with the use of the glass. Let's see. The, the, the one big concern I have is this, I mean, you, you talk about the master plan, but there, there really isn't a master plan. Uh, the only master plan we got is the one that shows office use, as I recall, that we did when we set up the TIF district and the early stages of working, uh, with Hillcrest. And, and what I worry about, I think here is the same thing, I think Member Stewart touched on it, is, and, and your comment, uh, kind of reinforced that concern. And that is that you, you're really concentrating on these two pieces that occupy about 10 acres out of the 28. And I get it, you know, you do what you can do. And you, you, you do it well and you're, you're committed to doing it well. But for us as a city, it would, it, for me, it would be better if this were all master planned and Member Fisher touched on it too. Because now we're going to be in a situation where you're going to come with a nice-looking project potentially. And let me ask you, are you thinking that you want, uh, or would need, uh, to take advantage of potential TIF that's available here?
Well, I know there's TIF for, um, for the underground infrastructure and the soils that we have to remove on site. So it's mainly for.
So your, your notion of where TIF's available, you'd like to see, uh, you'd like to be able to use it?
Well, that's one reason, I mean, we're here. We know that, um, in order to demo the buildings and such, those are TIF-eligible costs. Because there, there's an enormous amount of costs due to the poor soil situation. I know those are TIF-eligible.
So, w- one thing that would impact me is if you came back and asked for something more than that. I mean, we still have to make a decision of whether or not we're going to use it. But if you come back and ask for more than that, if you want us to do something for you above and beyond TIF, uh, you, we better know that now. And we better know it fairly soon because I think this council would want to address that in short order. And the reason I'm asking you that is because that's the rumor I'm hearing from the south side on the south parcel, is that we went through a sketch plan review with that developer and now he wants something in addition to TIF from us. And, and this council's never had a chance to even talk about that possibility. And frankly, I don't think this council's inclined to do that. But, uh, so if, if there's anything else that you think you need to make this work over and above what potentially is there from a TIF standpoint, we need to know that. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with any additional.
All right. But back to my main concern is that you got a, we got a 28-acre site here that, and you, you want to do something on 10 acres of it. The rest of it, you've got a plan here for it, but understandably, you're not committing to it, you're not saying you'll ever do it, you're saying that maybe in three to five years, you might be back. It might be somebody else with another kind of an idea. And it, the whole thing might not fit with what we would have had if we'd had a master plan for the whole thing that we, that we worked on and, and did, uh, in conjunction with this over, uh, that's different from or distinct from what we originally did, which was all office. So, uh, I mean, Member Stewart touched on this briefly when he said, I'm not going to favor anything that doesn't deal with affordable housing, where you're talking about dealing with affordable housing on the Walsh Title Site or Hillcrest is. We know that's got to be part of the discussion. But what about everything else? You know, I mean, this isn't your issue, it's Hillcrest, it's a Hillcrest issue. What about the other 18 acres? You know, what are we supposed to do? Just wait for another plan to come piecemeal when we thought we were going to master plan this whole thing? That, that's bothering me. Because I don't know what the future will bring and it would have been better to have had a master plan for this whole thing that dealt with all these different uses other than office.
I knew that, I know the new goal is, is housing across the board. I don't know if it will be condos or, uh, of what type of housing, but that is now the goal, which is why I know Hillcrest is working with Damon Farber on this master guideline, of which we're coordinating to follow those, those principles.
Okay, all right. I think you've made, uh, a good effort to deal with the principles, you know, the sustainability principles and the other principles that we've talked about being important. And those, some of those arose in the, in the original master planning phase. And I, I commend you for, for, you know, working on those. And I hope that we've given you some guidance. All right. Anybody else have any further follow-up? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next we've got. Whoops. Take a survey, that's not going to work. We've got the Resolution 2017-120 approving grants and donations.
Yep.
I'll move the matter.
Thank you. Uh, we've got a motion and a second. Trying to get back to it here. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approval of Resolution 2017-120, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay, log in, I got to go back. And that is this reporting period, we've got some, um, in-kind donations to Park and Recs, uh, for the Arts Center. In fact, a very generous gift from, uh, Corny, we call him, Cornelius Weens, $2,500, very, very generous. And then some other nice gifts, uh, to the Braemar Golf Course Memorial Fund, uh, from some of the members out there. And the donors' names will all be posted on the website. Thank you, Member Stotin. Okay, correspondence petitions, anything other than what was on the diocese this evening?
Just to reference, because I'm going to be talking to them with, uh, talking to you about them in, during my report, uh, a December 11th, uh, letter from Simon Properties and a December 11th letter from, uh, Hennepin County, uh, regarding the Court, Fourth Judicial District Court. Those were new tonight on the diocese.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, uh, aviation noise update.
Just a quick one. The noise, oh, the committee, community, hey Bob, would you read this? Read that paragraph, please. Thank you.
Bob, you don't touch the paper.
Community members of the Noise Oversight Committee met last week at Richfield City Hall to discuss the makeup of the NOC, the Noise Oversight Committee, and how communities are represented and the balance between community and industry representation is achieved. Uh, Boeing 747 jets are making their final flights this week before being retired for good. MSP will see the arrival of one of these celebratory 747 jets this week.
Lee Wright, today.
All right, uh, Member Stewart, you want to segue right into, uh, council comments, huh?
Sure. Uh, just a few council comments. Uh, Wednesday, December 6th, I attended a meeting on bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was held at the Senior Center. We got a lot of great input, really, uh, an interesting and active discussion there. I just want to mention two funerals that I went to in the last week. Dr. George Dorsey, as a pioneering psychologist and, and was a resident here in Minnesota, um, he was really the first psychologist to treat, uh, chemical addiction and alcoholism as a disease rather than as, uh, something else. And was a real pioneer in that area, really interesting guy. Raised 10 children, so many of us, uh, who live in Edina are friends with some of the Dorsey children because there are lots of them. Uh, second funeral I want to mention, Bud Jensen was a teacher at Edina High School, uh, English teacher, and, uh, and at Edina East during those important years when they were split. Uh, his wife Ginny was a Latin teacher at Edina High School and at Edina West during those years. And, uh, just a great couple, but Bud passed away and, and, uh, we honor him, uh, this past week. Tonight, uh, I believe is the eighth night of Hanukkah, it ends at sunset tomorrow. Uh, so, uh, Hanukkah blessings to all of our Jewish community and, uh, and just want to wish a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to, to everyone who's celebrating those things. Thank you.
Member Stotin.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Member Fisher.
I'll keep mine short. I just, I have to announce that, because I'll never be able to say this again, the state of Minnesota, number one ranked Edina Hornets unfortunately lost a basketball game tonight.
Oh.
To Chaska. And I, I did not check my text regularly, only once, just to get the end of the game score.
And is that the reason they lost is you weren't keeping up well enough?
Um, yeah, or something like that, but, um, so they lost to Chaska by three points, unfortunately.
Wow, all right.
So that'll be the last time we talk about them as the number one ranked team probably for a while.
Okay, well, the mayor is coming back and then he can give his comments.
I'm sensitive to, uh, Member Fisher having to drive to Duluth tonight, I have no comments. Manager Neil.
Yeah, I will try to be brief as well. Uh, the first thing I want to do is just update you, I think you've heard about this issue about the, uh, status of the court relocation in, um, in Hennepin County. Uh, this is the actual letter we received, uh, from the Fourth Judicial District Court. Uh, the, the, the project that I think many of us were aware of, that, uh, the, the Hennepin County wanted to move the courthouse, the Southdale Courthouse to Bloomington, that project has been canceled. Uh, they instead are making, uh, improvements to other courthouses and we have been assigned to the courthouse in Minnetonka. Uh, we don't have a date when that happens unless, unless, Mr. Chief, you've heard a, a date on that? I have not. I just suspect it will be sometime in 19. The second, uh, item for you tonight is one, uh, that we've received from Simon Properties, but it's in, and Lifetime Fitness. It's one that we receive periodically and it's regarding rooftop dining. I think we took a look at this as a planning commission and a council in 2011, maybe 2012? 2011. Planning Commission had a recommendation that went to the council, uh, council did not authorize it at that time. Uh, we get this, uh, we get this question a couple of times a year. Um, we've recently gotten it with the, the Lifetime Fitness Project at Southdale Center. And it's, it's, uh, pretty important to them and their concept there. It does not comply with our current, their project does not comply with our current, uh, code with regards to, to, uh, rooftop dining. And there's some interest in, in their part, and I think there's some interest in staff, uh, staff's part as well, to, uh, seek the council's interest in whether, whether you have interest or not in, in liberalizing that part of our city code. And if you did, uh, we would begin a process of advancing that, uh, issue to you. There's some discussion points about, um, how close it can be and what zones it might be in and, uh, how close it could be to residential, et cetera, et cetera. But if you have some interest in pursuing this, we'd, we'd tee it up for you.
Member Stotin.
So I, I'm, I was on the planning commission when it came up in 2011, um, and I'm intrigued by the possibility, but I would also want staff to be talking with them about, um, how people get to it and how it connects with the rest of not just the Southdale Superblock, but the Southdale District and how we, um, get people there, not just in cars, but also on foot and, and bicycle and other ways that I think are, um, are part of the whole network. So I, I'm, my mind is open to it, but I'm interested in how it fits into a larger strategic picture.
Don't you anticipate that they'd have to be lifetime members to use it?
They would, we've heard that.
But we wouldn't just approve of, uh, rooftop dining for that one spot. We'd probably approve of it for a lot of places and I think if you're going to do that, you're connecting people to places and I'd like to hear about how we would connect to those places.
Okay.
When we looked at this in 2011, the primary concern was that we had new condominiums at 5,000 France adjacent to, uh, Salute. And Salute wanted to, um, have rooftop dining and, um, we were a little bit concerned about whether or not it might affect sales, uh, at the 5,000 France building. So we decided to defer on it. But I think it's probably a topic whose time has come again and we can look at it, uh, in a more condensed sort of way. We could look at it for the Southdale District and not necessarily, not necessarily 50th and France, but I think it merits having another look too.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, good. Final, final item for me is that this is the time of year, our last council meeting of the year, where we, uh, start the process of getting you thinking about whether, uh, how many of you, or if, if some of you want to go to National League of Cities, Congressional Cities Conference in Washington DC in March. You don't, I'm not asking you to tell me that tonight, but it's something we'll probably be following up with you the first week of January to begin making those plans. Okay? That's all I have, thank you.
And then Manager Neil, the gentleman in the, in the audience are the gentleman that brought forward the notion of, um, the Xerxes Avenue property being potentially sold. And I asked him to meet with you after the meeting. And you could give him some guidance.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, hang on. We're going to adjourn this meeting, we've got one more short meeting for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. All right, um, anything further for the council? All right, stand adjourned. Calling to order the, uh, meeting of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brindle.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Stotin.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Chair Havelin.
Here.
Uh, we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us for the HRA this evening. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
And a motion and a second to approve the meeting agenda, discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Uh, community comment for the HRA, is there anyone who wishes to comment in the audience? Seeing no one coming forward, uh, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, that is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll retain a motion to adopt the.
Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? Anything else for the HRA? Members? Okay. HRA stands adjourned and we stand adjourned.
All right.